This time I'll call the August meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he'd lead us in our board prayer. Board members, you please rise for the prayer and then we'll immediately follow by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Congress, Heavenly Father, again, we want to thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. We want to thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve the children of Haywood County. Lord, again, we pray tonight that your guidance is upon us. We're continuing to face situations, Lord, that have been unfaced in the past. Decisions that have to be made that affect the lives of so many people. Lord, again, pray that we put our trust in you and you will guide us through these things. Lord, we pray for peace and pray for diligence in our schools. We want to thank you, Lord. We're about to go to work again to educate children. Our teachers and our staff are preparing. They've never quit preparing, Lord, but we know they're preparing again to start this year and to start it right and start it the best way we can. And please be with our staff, our teachers, our students, and our parents, and our communities, that we can all work together and work this thing through, that we can all be successful, and that, Lord, soon, we'll be able to get to some normalcy within this community and within this world. God directs us all that we do. We'll give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Under announcements, I would like to announce that Mr. Kirkpatrick was not able to be here this evening. He is celebrating his anniversary tonight, and tonight, Dr. Rogers will not be with us due to a prior commitment at his church. Under announcements, I'd like to announce our next regular board meeting will be Monday, September 14th, here at the Education Center at seven o'clock. Are there any other notices that need to be made? Okay. Is there anything that needs to be added to the agenda this time?
Mr. Chairman, the buildings and grounds has a couple of items they'd like to bring before the board in our agenda.
All right. Let's do them right before we do the monthly financial reports, right before the Finance Committee will do the two items.
Okay.
All right. Is there any objection to adding those to the items? Okay. Anything else under agenda adjustments? If not, entertain the motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Mr. Rogers has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burnett. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Dr. Putnam presenting.
He's on his way, Mr. Francis.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I wanted to bring special recognition to our maintenance department.
Our Transportation Department and Mr. Mark Shepherd. Good news to share. We will be receiving, or we have been awarded, a total of three buses from the Volkswagen Settlement Clean Air Grant Program. We will receive two yellow buses, which will replace two of our most problematic international, what they call dirty diesel buses. We will also receive full reimbursement for an activity bus to replace eight zero zero nine, which is a handicap lift bus that serves the east end of the county. This bus is used for EC transportation, occupational courses study transportation, as well as small teams such as golf and tennis. This will be a Thomas forty-four passenger lift bus. So I just wanted to say congratulations to our Transportation Department and make you aware of this great grant that we've received.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam, and congratulations to our Transportation Department.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have Mr. Jason Hines. I think he'll be coming in remote.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, for your information, we are providing the, you should have copies of the teacher turnover report from 2019 and 2020. The teacher turnover report goes from March. The first one will go from March of 2018 to March of 2019. The second one goes from March of 19 to March of 20. So the second one is the most recent. On the teacher turnover report, you have several reasons for teachers who might leave Haywood County Schools to teach somewhere else. They may have exercised retirement, teaching another school system, teaching another state, a career change, or family relocation are the most used reasons when they fill out a resignation form to leave Haywood County Schools. So in comparing these two charts, if you look at the first one from 2018 to 2019, the important number to look at there is the, one important number to look at is the overall attrition rate, which is what the state looks at and how they rank different school systems. Haywood County Schools, for the last seven years, has hovered around the 11% mark, between 11 and 11 and a half. Last year, or year before last, 18 to 19, it was 11.07%. That particular year, you had 13 teachers retire with full benefits. You had 16 resigning to teach in another public school system. Seven resigned to teach in another state. Six resigned for a career change completely. And five resigned for a family relocation. The next year, if you look at 1920, which ends in this past March, Haywood County Schools' attrition rate went down a full point, 1.1. It's down to 10.06%. Haywood County Schools went down in every category previously mentioned. We had 11 retire with full benefits. 13 resigned to teach in another school system. Two resigned to teach in another state. And four left for a family relocation. But the family relocation is the only one, you know, that the teacher may or may not have control over. So that's something to keep an eye on as well. We maintain the same number of teachers as far as how many positions we have. Four hundred ninety-seven certified teaching positions, actually, in classroom teachers. There are other certified positions, such as council or social workers and so forth. Those are not included in this particular report that the state puts out. The first year, we had 55 teachers leave for one of the reasons listed among, and some other reasons, but those are the main ones. The next year, 1920, we had 50 teachers leave, and that's fairly common to hover around that number, but it is coming down, and it is coming down significantly from years past, particularly those teachers leaving to teach in other districts. In the 2016 school year, it was up to 27 very experienced teachers left to teach in other districts. So that number is coming down, and we appreciate the work that y'all did to improve the teacher supplement, and we think that's helping as well. As part of this report, one of the things that we were asked to give the state is the teaching areas that are hardest to fill, and for the last seven years, that has remained math, high school math being the, 912 math being the most difficult to fill, followed by science, 912 science at the high school level. School psychologist is very difficult to find. English language learner teachers are difficult, and foreign language is becoming more difficult. So those are the ones that we reported to the state as being difficult to fill. That rounds out the report. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
A question, I do have a comment, and I would like to thank our staff for, and again, this board, not patting anybody on the back, but our staff and our recommendations and our county has been very strong supportive of Haywood County Schools and their teachers, and I think that that's a, this is hopefully showing a sign of that, because like you say, losing teachers to surrounding counties that may pay better or something like that, it's, we know we've got some great teachers here, and this board, I know myself, not, this is speaking for our board, I feel like as a consensus, we really want to do whatever we can to be so competitive, because we don't want to lose these good teachers either, and we do applaud them and thank them for their dedication to Haywood County Schools. Anyone else? Mr. Hines, thank you very much for putting the report together and sharing it with the board tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Ms. King, did anyone sign up to address the board in public comments? Okay. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the July 13th, July 22nd, July 30th regular session minutes. Just trying to entertain a motion that they'd be approved as presented.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Ms. Barrett's made the motion. Mr. Henson, you want to second it? Mr. Henson has seconded the motion. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'd just like to say that before we do this next session, this board has made, I think this is the 23rd meeting since March 1st, is that correct? Something like that? We've done a lot of work, so at this time, we have, I think it's 13 closed session minutes that we approved. We wanted to do those in person, and we had a chance to do that at our closed session meeting tonight, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion. We approve the listed closed session minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Rogers has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burnett. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, board. Next, we have Ms. Ginny Wood.
Good evening, Chairman Francis, members of the board. For your approval, you have, if you can believe it, the calendar waiver request for the school year 2021, 2022.
Okay.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the calendar waiver request another time.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
I'll suck it.
Second by Mr. Francis. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Twenty years on here, I hope this state opens this up one of these days to let us make this decision, not have to apply for waivers.
That's right. Any other questions or comments? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Lisa Thompson. Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Chairman Francis, members of the board. I'm here to ask for approval for a contract with Dr. Robert Brooks, who is a psychologist that will do a, will do virtual training for us with our teachers. This training will use some COVID funds that have been provided, and the training will hope to help our teachers in building resilience in our children when hard times, and our children have dealt with some really difficult times, and this is an effort that we're making to support our teachers and to support our children.
Okay. At this time, we entertain a motion. We approve the contract for Dr. Robert Brooks.
So moved.
Mr. Clark made the motion. Second, Mr. Burnett. Is that okay? Okay. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Pat, have you had a chance to look over the? Okay.
So the board attorney's checked off on it. Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Okay. Next, we have Dr. Putnam again for a bunch of policies. Here he comes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you for first read, Policy 3410, Testing and Assessment Program. In Section C, it adds requirements for review of time spent on local standardized testing in accordance with new state law, updates legal references, and updates the hyperlinks. You also have 4110, Immunization and Health Requirements for School Administration, updates the vaccine requirements to include a booster dose of menin gokel, menin gokel, golly day, I cannot say that word. I'll let you read it. It's a really big old word. I don't know why I'm struggling there.
It's all right.
Conjugate vaccine. Then also, you have Policy 4270, a 6145 concussion and head injury, adds a new Section B, which requires student, athletes, and their parents to view the crash course concussion education video prior to each sports season. You also have 4325, Drugs and Alcohol, clarifies the statement at Paragraph A7 and adds an example of the lawful use of an otherwise prohibited substance that may be approved by the principal. And then 6325, Parking Areas for Students. Those are all of your policies for first read.
Those will be tabled for 30 days for public input.
Thank you. I'll learn how to pronounce that word before the next.
I'll learn how to say table.
All right. Next are the Title IX policies. There were six new ones in total. If you remember, we discussed these at work session. They were received two days prior to our last work session, and we were encouraged by the North Carolina School Board Association to expedite the process, enact these policies, and put them up for approval as quickly as possible, even if that meant foregoing the 30 days to do so because of a new federal law that goes into effect August 14th of this month, in this year. I'll give you just a quick synopsis to go back over it one last time, since it has been expedited. Up until now, the North Carolina School Board Association model policies that reflected the board's general stance against bullying, harassment, and discrimination, and then the approach the administration would take to investigate and remedy complaints alleging violations of that general policy, were all contained in two master policies. Primarily because the newly adopted Title IX final rule requires a whole new set of procedures for matters relating to sex and gender-based discrimination, the North Carolina School Board Association has overhauled its policies in this area. These new policies break apart the Title IX definitions, informal resolution process, formal complaint investigation process, and potential outcomes into separate policies. Your policies prohibiting discrimination on other bases, for example disability, are preserved in newly numbered policies, much as they were before. Because the Title IX final rule requires implementation by August 14th, 2020, we recommend the board entertain a motion to suspend a second reading and to immediately adopt all these policies as presented. So we actually did get ours put up for first read, even though it wasn't the 30 days, so we do have the opportunity for that second approval. I've also forwarded those to Mr. Smathers. He had a chance to look at those, and I'll stop if he wants to add anything.
Looks good.
We've not had any public input on those at this moment, Tom. No, sir. We have not had any public input on those, and so I'll read off those numbers. It's 171040207230, 172040307235, 17254035 slash 7236, 1726 slash 4036 slash 7237, Policy 4329 slash 7311, and Policies 7232. All of those are for your consideration or approval.
Okay, at this time, since we did get a chance to have public input, do you think we need to suspend the rules for the 30 days?
Part of.
Because we have to put them in.
I think on the chart, that's probably run down.
Okay.
I think it's probably not. Yeah.
We could always come back and revise if we need to. Okay.
I think I mentioned that last time when we had.
I think we did as well on the other meeting.
We need to, yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the policies that Mr. Putnam just enumerated.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay?
All right. In addition to those newly adopted policies, now that you've approved, approved the new policies, also coinciding with these new policies are policy revisions for existing policies you already have. It is also the encouragement of the North Carolina School Board Association that these be revised and adopted in conjunction with those new policies. They are Policy 1730 slash 4022 slash 7231. Next policy is for revision would be 4040 slash 7310. The next policy would be 4331, and the last policy would be 4340, and so that's adjustments to reflect the newly adopted policies, the existing policies.
Anyone want to make a motion to? Ms. Barrett's made a motion to revise the policies that Dr. Putnam just presented to us and enumerated them for the record. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just one more.
That's right. Did we do that top one?
Did we?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
We've got two more things to do, but go ahead.
Okay. So because you adopted the new policies as recommended by the North Carolina School Board Association, and because you revised those policies, the final recommendation of the North Carolina School Board Association is to rescind two policies. The first policy being 1710 slash 4021 slash 7230. That's the first policy for recension. Second policy is 1720 slash 4015 slash 7225, recension.
Okay.
Also directly related to the new Title IX policies and the revised existing policies in accordance with the new Title IX regulations. These two would be for recension or removal.
And this is because what we just approved already addresses what's in these policies?
Yes, sir. These would actually inappropriately and inaccurately address the new Title IX regulations.
Great.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion that we rescind the two policies as mentioned before.
I'll make a motion to rescind the policies as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Francis. Do I hear a second? Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to maybe give a little bit of input here. The reason these policy numbers, a lot of them have 1700 series, 4,000 series, 7,000 series, a lot of these policies reflect governing principles, students, personnel, I think it's just mainly a comment for the general public, I know our board knows this, but these policies are affecting staff, students, the governor board regulations for the community and everything, so just to let you know that that's kind of why it's separated in different numbers and formats and it's sectional, just to kind of give them the information that this is covering the whole school system.
Very good. Did we vote on that? I've lost track of them. Okay, any other questions or comments? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we need to go back up.
The 1320.
1320 and 3560.
Who wants? 27 and 3460. We need to.
Is under item number 14.
We tabled the other ones, and this is the second reading on the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, for second reading, and I don't have that in front of me.
You need to give him those.
Thank you. Thank you. Good catch, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I thank a lot of folks.
And Mr. Francis, thank you.
Yes.
For second reading also, after we've made it through the Title IX minutia, is Policy 30, 1320 slash 3560. That's the Title One Parent and Family Engagement. The next policy for second reading was 2127, New Board Member Technology Use, and the last one for second reading is Policy 3460, Graduation Requirements.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion. We approve the listed three policies for second reading. Okay, Ms. Barrett's made a motion that we approve them. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being them, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Alright, thank you.
Next on our agenda, we added two items, I think it was, from the Building and Grounds Committee, so I'll recognize Mr. Jimmy Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Building and Grounds Committee has met previously, and our first motion is spend $100,000 to put padding down both sidelines at Piersga High School and Tuscola High School's football stadiums, when we're doing the re-turfing and the remodeling of the stadiums. And I'll explain further, that's our motion.
Here we have a motion from Mr. Rogers, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
A little more clarification on that, Mr. Chairman. The football stadium, the sidelines, according to safety guidelines that they were recommending when we were redoing the stadiums, was to be 15 feet on the sidelines and end zones. Were able to accomplish that on the end zones. The sidelines, we're not able to accomplish that due to the many of your visitor stands and also the home stands. That would be, you wouldn't have enough walkway in between those, between the field and the fence line. So we've got 10 feet, and this is the other, they said if you can't do the 15 feet, they recommend putting padding on the sideline fences, and that's an extra protection and safety for our children. That's the main reason we've incorporated this part. The handicap accessibility, everything else was added, and this was one step that we did not have at that time. But also, we had a tremendous amount of savings in the total project, so, and we also got to looking back and said, oh, let's make sure we get it right while we're doing it. So it's another safety feature we're adding to the project.
I'd like to point out that these funds are lottery funds, they cannot be used for salaries, teacher pay, or any other thing except capital improvements. I just want to make that clear. There's a lot of confusion about what lottery funds can be used for, but these funds are to be used exclusively for capital improvements, and this is a very important one due to safety.
And haven't we already put aside some money for the turf replacements?
It's already.
It's already appropriated, all that's been done, and this is.
And it came in under bid, came in under bids, we got quite a bit of savings, but this we felt like was very important. Any other questions or comments before we vote? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We have one more. This one here is the Building and Grounds would like to make a motion that we surplus the cab and chassis, and the motor only off of a 2008 Ford F-450 truck. It's a plumbing truck. Now, there is a bed on that truck that will be removed and be reused on another vehicle that's able to be operated. This vehicle is inoperable. And so we're going to get rid of the vehicle, but save the bed to use as a replacement unit sometime in the future when it's needed.
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I guess I'm discussed before we had the second, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Well, that's alright. That's not a problem. Alright, any other further discussion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that is all the Building and Grounds has at this time, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your work on the Building and Grounds Committee, thank you all very much. Next, we have our Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Ronnie Clark.
Mr. Chairman, earlier tonight, the Finance Committee met, and we approved the monthly, regular monthly financial reports, and I need full board approval now, please, I'm bringing the motion for that.
Okay, we have a motion from the, Mr. Clark, from the Finance Committee, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say, Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next, we have Dr. Nolte, and I see him coming now, for Personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, those who are logged on, staff or streaming wise, at this time I bring before you the Personnel that was shared previously in closed session. For your information, we have nine separation from employment, and six employee status changes. For your approval, we have 17 employments, 21 employee status changes, one employee coach, and one volunteer coach.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I'll make a motion that we approve the Personnel as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Say, Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I'd like to introduce, hopefully the last introductions prior to the beginning of school of senior administrative staff. Some of these were hired or changed positions several months ago, and some of these are brand new. At this time, I would invite Todd Barbie to log on. Todd Barbie has agreed to be our Innovative Partnership Coach for a very large $1.5 million grant for Central Haywood High School. He'll be working with the central office staff on that project, and I want to thank him for taking that role. And Todd, if you would come on and say something that makes me look real smart.
Yes, sir, thank you, Dr. Bill. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Welcome to my kitchen. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, Dr. Nolte, and the board, thank you for placing me in a position that I really needed for me and my family. The having, the hardest thing I've done is stepping in from Hazel Middle, but I needed to do it because it's for my family. That's a wonderful school, and with the best teachers. When it comes down to it, my family has been neglected, my wife has been neglected, and I just needed to do what I needed to do for them. My family deserves a dad and not a principal. When I told my son, Brooks, who will be a sixth grader at Hazel Middle this coming year, when I told him that I was not going to be there, he said, well, if it doesn't mean you're going to be on your phone or your computer all night, that means that's okay. So, but regardless, you know, I'm so excited about working with Wendy Rogers. I mean, she is so passionate about making Central Haywood into something different, and the Drive Company that we have partnered with. This is going to be such a good grant, and, you know, it'll enable the teachers to, at Central, to just, to get on the same page. And so the kids can not only graduate with a high school diploma, but also graduate with some HCC credits, and hopefully with a certificate that will enable them to go into the workforce. So I just thank the board and Dr. Bill for allowing me this. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. You'll do a great job, we appreciate the work you have already done and that you will do the next three years managing that grant for us. I guess I don't need to introduce Wendy Rogers with nice, kind words, because Todd's already done that, but Wendy has agreed to return to her high school roots and to be the principal at Central Haywood High School. She's been working with a number of people down there already, and they have a number of great plans in place. We actually met today virtually and talked about something, so at this time I present Wendy Rogers, the principal at Central Haywood.
Good evening, Dr. Nolte. Thank you, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, members of the board. It is a great privilege to work in Haywood County Schools. I've always said to teach, lead, and work with Haywood County School employees, it's just, I'm among the best educators here, and that's an amazing thing. Leaving the elementary world, I had to think a couple times about it because it has been a great experience over the last 10 years, but this is a very familiar transition to me, as Dr. Nolte just said. I'm coming from a high school experience with a background at Tuscola in teaching and leading with the administration. To continue to lead with educators in a high school who's willing to serve students and help them transition from high school to the workplace or on to post-secondary experiences, that's beyond exciting. And the work that Mr. Barbie and I have already done here at Central Haywood with the Drive and the Central Haywood staff, I'm just ready to go. It's going to be a great year. So I've been blessed to serve in this district for over 20 years, and my roots run really deep here. Born and raised in Haywood County is a great thing to be able to brag about, and to give back to our county and to this district in this way is just certainly an honor. So I've been led by outstanding leaders in our district for the past 20 years, supported by great coworkers, and been able to work with some amazing, amazing teachers and support staff, and I know that's just going to continue here at Central Haywood High School. So tonight I say thank you, and I look forward to great things at Central Haywood High School, and go Dogs!
Thank you, Wendy. At this time, I want to introduce Todd Trantham. He has served us well for a long time at the elementary level, district level, and high school level. He's returning to the elementary world where he started as a teacher, and Todd, we appreciate you. I've seen a lot of detailed work and organizational work already with you, and I'm just glad you're at Hazelwood, and if you would, when you finish, if you will introduce your new Assistant Principal.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, central office staff, I want to thank you for putting your trust in me. This was a difficult decision to finally decide to make this move, talked to Dr. Nolte about it, but I could not have asked to inherit a better situation. This staff has been so welcoming, and I am excited to kick things off tomorrow. Now, one of the first things I got to face when I came down here was the fact that I found my Assistant Principal was leaving and going to the high school, and so I was fortunate enough in that process to convince a young lady who was originally from Haywood County to come back home from Jackson County and join our admin team. So now let me introduce to you the new Assistant Principal at Hazelwood Elementary School, Ms. Bridgette Brooks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Nolte, and the central office staff, I just want to express my sincere thankfulness for the opportunity to serve Hazelwood Elementary in the role of Assistant Principal. It is an honor to serve the students, families, faculty and staff, and the community members of Hazelwood. This is coming home for me, and I am tremendously grateful for this opportunity, and it would not be possible without your support. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bridgette. Welcome to, welcome back, I guess I should say. At this time, I'd like to introduce Heather Blackman, the principal at Tuscola, they're rocking and rolling up there, I think they gave out, I don't know the exact number, between 200 and 250 Chromebooks today. I heard that everyone had on a mask, except maybe just a couple parents, but we gave them one, and they used it. So Ms. Blackman, if you would introduce your new Assistant Principal at this time, that would be great. I saw her on there earlier. She doesn't come on in the second, I'll introduce him. Okay, must have a technical difficulty, so no worries. I had the pleasure of meeting this gentleman. We were able to recruit into our county a very capable high school math teacher, who also has a lot of good experience and has an administrative degree. His personality is infectious, and we look forward to him staying with us for quite some time. Let me introduce to you Billy Harold.
Good evening. I would like to thank Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Barker, and the board for this opportunity. I'm especially thankful to Ms. Blackman for giving me this opportunity to advance my career and be an Assistant Principal. I'm very excited to be moving over to Haywood County and to be a Mountaineer. It's going to be a great opportunity for me, and most importantly, I need to thank my wife for this opportunity, she's been very supportive in this move. And lastly, you can't beat this view out the window, that's what it's all about, so I'm glad to be on the hill and be a part of Tuscola.
Go Matisse!
Thank you, Mr. Harold. Mr. Chairman, board, thank you. There's Ms. Blackman.
How little technical difficulties getting on, off of mute and on the camera, but I also just want to thank all of you so much for the opportunity to work with this young man. He is a math teacher that we were able to steal away from Buncombe County, and I'm awfully glad we did. And I have to brag on his, already the things that he's done at Tuscola in terms of looking at our math classes and evaluating some data for us, and I'm just, I'm thrilled to be working with him. He's going to be such a great asset to our leadership team, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Blackman, thank you, Mr. Chairman and board.
Thank you. Congratulations to all those that we've recognized tonight, and thanks for coming on, and I know you'll do wonderful and great things for Haywood County Schools and our students.
Yeah, thanks for being part of Haywood County Schools, like we said earlier, got good people, keep them coming.
There's nothing else to come before the board this evening, a meeting is adjourned.